Here.
Yes.
President.
Here. And just for the record, y'all, our mayor is traveling back from DC. He'll be back hopefully later on this afternoon, but he won't be at the work session, but he sends his regards.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. Invitation, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, would you like Reverend McDowell to do the honors?
If he would honor us.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord, for all that you've done for us, for the sunshine and the warmth that we are experiencing in our city. Although it may return, let us now rejoice, enjoy it now as it avails itself. Be with us as a city and yet as a council. Touch and sensitize us to the needs of our city. Be with our mayor as he travels. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, we would ask for the adoption of the agenda. If there are any additions going into executive session, you all can deal with those at that time.
So move.
All right. Okay, are there?
So move.
You've done it both ways. Either way is fine.
All right. So Ms. Moore, it has been probably moved in second for the adoption of the amendment, the adoption of the agenda. If the court will read the roll.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And at this time, we will begin our city council discussion items, the first being the Midlands Business Leadership Group, and we would welcome several members of that group here today to include Ms. Lou Kennedy, the CEO and owner of Nephron Pharmaceuticals Corporation, and Mr. Chuck Barnett, also here, regional executive to the division CEO for MBSC, Senova Bank. Welcome.
Welcome, guys. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. We really were excited to get started on this project exactly one year ago. It started with the idea if we're going to produce a competitiveness report, what are we going to do with the information? Are we going to use it like a scorecard and try and improve some of the indices? And we're going to talk about that. But we started this time last year, and we're just going to let you know a little bit about what we've done. First, I should tell you that MBLG stands for Midlands Business Leadership Group, and there's about 45 of us, business leaders from across the area. Most of us are presidents, CEOs, or owners, or both. And so we come together, and we've really been under the radar for the last 15 or 16 years. We've worked on projects such as working with transitions and a few other things, but we decided last year to be a little more vocal and see if we couldn't help you guys, help us all be better each and every day. So that's how this all started. Now, if I can operate. What am I?
Is it on?
Okay. I make drugs. I can't operate technology. There you go. The green light would have been my clue. Okay. Okay, so what we did is we worked with Ingenuity SC, a group that Megan Hickman leads up, and they kind of are our facilitator to help us stay on task and to drive this process. We do have this vision for the future. We can all read, but really, this was the statement that we adopt to accelerate the development of Columbia as a region that attracts and retains top talent, produces vibrant job offerings, and provides necessary resources to improve livability for all people. But I would incorporate the word "and super cool" too. Okay, so this was last year's competitiveness report. You've probably seen these floating around over the courses of the cover. The next one will be launched for your viewing by January 29th, I believe it is. So this is pretty impressive, in my opinion. We successfully completed 37 meetings with over 110 participants. That means folks from every possible discipline, different businesses, people with different concerns and cares about our city, and we focused on five different areas. But if you just look at the numbers, this is really an awesome example of all of us in the Columbia area coming together to work for the good of the whole. So the results of phase two, we established a formal collaboration with the property owners from Gervada Catawba to address the design, funding, development, and operation of a regional waterfront amenity along the Congry River. Now, do we know what that looks like? Do we know? No, but we want to start pushing forward and working to identify what can be done, what could be done, and how we could capitalize on that beautiful, beautiful part of our city. Two, design, and these are all the results of all those working groups. So, "Design and Implement a Solution for Regional Branding That Includes Funding, Ownership, Coordination, Collaboration, and Regional Buying." From our studies, we found that people outside Columbia tended to think we're way cooler than we ourselves think we are. And so we thought, well, who's really talking about it? Who's really doing anything about it? So you've seen in the last year, the launch of COLA Today, really doing a good job, I think, of talking about the mayor's amendments and other things. We've also realized that we do have that Columbia Convention and Visitors Bureau that talks about what's to folks outside our radius, but who's talking to us inside. So we're trying to figure out who can own that task and do a really great job of just talking about just how great we are and what all we have to offer. Three, evaluate and accelerate the mission, structure, role, and funding model for economic development in Lexington and Richland Counties. Well, I think there's something like 20 or 30 different entities somehow crisscross around the idea of economic development, but everybody's sort of single-minded in their purpose. It really came as a big initiative out of this that we talk about, how can we start to get in a room together, figure out what each of us are doing, and do a better job, perhaps, with the way we recruit businesses? We don't want to just look at big box guys. You know, we need to look at the IT economy. I'm quite proud that the study's been done, that the life sciences is an $11.4 billion impact to South Carolina. We're a part of that. It seems to be emerging in the Columbia area. There's quite a few of us pharma companies and device companies, and so, you know, I'm happy to see some of that grow and help to recruit spinoff for people that support what we do. Number four, convene a new coordinating council for regional collaboration to include the MBLG chambers, Carl's here, regional economic development, downtown development, Matt's here in the room, et cetera, that, among other things, will lead the charge to integrate more diverse young people into positions of leadership. So, for example, we're doing it, I'm on the board at MBSC with Chuck, and we've got young folks coming on our board. We're really focused on diversity. We have, I've identified eight folks under the age of 42 that are on some of the local committees and boards around Columbia, Red Cross and a few others. So we're trying to get younger, future leaders on these boards before they get to be my age.
All right, Chuck.
Don't switch it over. Okay.
Get your accents.
Can't follow Lou Kennedy doing anything here. All right, phase two, governmental collaboration, support both chambers' effort to ensure greater collaboration between the public entities and the business community. Just for background, I was born in Columbia in 1958, grew up in Charleston, went to school here, and then went off for a number of years. Had the good fortune to move back in 1998, and I've seen tremendous progress since I've moved back in 1998, and I think we've made a lot of great strides, but real excited about this effort and what this group is doing. Tremendous diversity with all of these working committees, both in terms of age, as Lou referenced. Of course, Lou's still young, I'm not, but diversity in terms of race, in terms of background, in terms of what they do for a living, but a lot of excited young folks in our community that care a lot about making, continuing that momentum that we already have and making the Midlands and Columbia a better place to live. And then, one-stop shop, I was on the Business and Entrepreneurial Committee, and one of the things we noticed in the competitiveness reports in those communities that got high grades in this area was basically a one-stop shop when it comes to somebody that has a business idea, wants to start a new business. Where do they go to get advice? And I think there's a lot of good resources in our community, but there is a need to make it more visible, tie those resources together, and for a young entrepreneur that wants to start a new business, they've got one place to go to get all the help that they need to get going. Pedestrian connections. I've been assigned this committee, and I spent a lot of time walking around downtown, going to lunch, back and forth to meetings, and we can be more pedestrian-friendly. And we had our first session a couple weeks ago. I think there's some low-hanging fruit there on some things that we can do to maybe slow some of the traffic down and have folks pay more attention to red lights, and I think there's some state law obstacles to be able to do some of the things that other communities have done, but we had good discussion, and we had representation from the city, and appreciate your support on that. That's the kind of thing we need, is having your folks get involved in these discussions and let the business folks know from a governmental standpoint, maybe some things that can be done and some things that can't be done, and what's feasible. Kick it back to Lou.
Okay, so what's next? And this is where we're hoping that you guys will consider getting involved, whether it's just from support or just conversing with your peers and colleagues to talk about these initiatives. I'm telling you, I'm a drug dealer, nothing more. So maybe that's the last slide. Well, is that, we don't have another slide? Okay, so I guess what we'd like to say to you guys is, we're heartened by what we've been able to accomplish so far, and it's nothing else but bringing this many folks together in this many meetings. We are really trying to look at some of the other cities around, our peer cities that are also state capitals, that have teaching or research universities. What have they done? What have they done right? What have they done, things that we wouldn't want to copy? And take all of that into effect, into our own resources, and figure out what can we do? Like, is it maybe the Advent, or let's talk about bike paths, or because we've got so many young folks moving downtown? What is it we need to do to really make this the type of city where we retain top talent? And we've got so many awesome graduates from all over our schools and particularly right in our own backyard, whether it's Midlands Technical College or the university. How do we keep those folks here instead of Atlanta, or Charlotte, or other folks? How do we keep them right in South Carolina, in our own companies? I want to give a shout out to the mayor. He was kind enough over the Christmas week to join us at Nephron Pharmaceuticals, where we announced we were giving our employees a 5% raise across the board, just as a response to the Tax Cut and Jobs Act, and he was nice enough to come and celebrate with us as our employees heard the news for the first time. And thank y'all for allowing him some time off to do that on a, I think, 27th or 28th during the Christmas week. Want to add anything? Because I know we need to be brief.
Yeah, the one thing I'd like to add, as I walked in the door, I couldn't help but notice the city's vision statement that was over in the corner, and you'll see a lot of very consistent themes in what's in the city's vision and what this work process has come up with. And the different work groups, as you see in the materials, had different assignments as far as what they were working on, whether it was livability, the committee that Lou was on, the Business and Entrepreneurship Committee that I was on. But what came out of all these different groups was some very consistent themes that really crossed over the different subjects on what needed to be done to, we're already a good place to live, but what could make us an even better place to live, particularly for the younger folks that were involved in these committees and the ones that we hope to retain in the years to come.
Any questions? Comments? Tell us what to do.
Well, we just thank you guys. I mean, MBLG has been great in our community, and we'd like to see this bigger role. I think, as Chuck pointed out, making sure that we're communicating, and especially, we went through a year-long envisioning process that the seven of us got around those vision goals and priorities, and there is a lot of overlap. And so we would love to see, you know, we keep that communication so that y'all know kind of where we're going, so that y'all can be our mouthpieces. Because a lot of people don't necessarily know, and we've been doing a good job, I think, at trying to get our vision out there, but some people don't know what we're doing. And when you hear people say, okay, the city's not doing anything with bicycle pedestrian friendliness, then maybe as we're doing things, we can make sure that you guys know, and then you can be letting that information be known as well, so.
We'll do our best. Some of us are really fairly shy, but we'll do our best to make it.
Anyway, Sam?
I agree with Tamika. One of the things, there is some continuity in the vision in terms of what you, as a business group, think you need to be doing. But I think one of the things that could help everybody is that we tend to look at, same as we're trying to look at the area, when you get to, let's say, let's Columbia, not just look at the core. We have to look at areas where there is a dire need for development. We don't profess to be the experts, but I think we can strike up some unique partnerships because there are some needs, and there are people who want to enjoy certain types of development where they live. And I think if you read the literature, it tells you that the young people, especially millennials, don't necessarily want to maybe concentrate. They live anywhere. You know, they, as long as they've got a livable wage, they'll live anywhere where they, in the area where they work. And I think we can, we can, we need to make more progress in that area. And I'd like to see a commitment to do that. Let's look at the entire area where we have pockets that are primed for development, and we have talent in those areas. The people with the talent has to go elsewhere in order to shop their skills or to entertain and make impact.
I think you're going to hear from Robert Hughes, and he's going to tell you about a great place to live, work, and play. And he's going to tell you how super cool his area is.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, guys.
Just one question. One of the things that's always been a challenge is the economic development. And like you mentioned earlier, the crossover, there's just like homeless services, you've got 67 groups doing homeless but nobody working together. Who is kind of leading that charge to try to bring that together?
Johnny Folsom is chairing that effort, and that committee has been formed. Johnny Folsom Colliers, if y'all know Johnny, and he, they have got representatives from Lexington, Richland, the city, alliances, they're, I mean, it's all the right players, all around the table, all working on this. And everybody through those meetings had buy-in, like, okay, let's talk about it. How can we do this better? What do we, you know, like, I tell, I live out now in Lexington County, and I'm like, what can we get a new movie theater? Like, what I got to do to get a new movie theater, for example? Well, that's not a traditional role for economic development, but if I want people to like where they live, maybe that's a good thing to tackle. So stuff like that, everybody's, I think we're encouraging more conversation. I'll probably get a call from somebody in Lexington County now for saying that, but anyway.
But that's.
Well, the potential for partnering, I think, is extremely important.
I agree.
If it's an economic development issue, the partnering, of course, brings that into full focus. So I applaud your steps in sort of doing that. It's also affirming to know that you all have looked at our vision statement and meshed it with what you're trying to do.
We've got to work together.
And you're absolutely right. We've got to work together, and we've got to form partnerships, and the partnerships that we have strengthen those partnerships.
Well, we've got some great examples in our own state where you've seen multiple counties working together. It wasn't about so much the line in the sand as just the area as a whole. You know, I was having a conversation, you know, when I was a little girl, what'd you do in Traveler's Rest? Well, now Traveler's Rest is like hooked to Greenville, right? And so, you know, who knows, someday we might be bicycling from Newbury to Columbia, and there are Traveler's Rests. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to really support ourselves. We've got so many great things to offer here, and the more we talk about it, the better it is for all of us, in my opinion.
Great.
Thank y'all for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, item two is the Bull Street Development Update. Mr. Robert Hughes, president of Hughes Development Corporation.
Let me get this thing plugged in real quick.
Hey, Robert.
Hey, what's your name? All right. See if it works. Was it the other? My name is Robert Hughes. I am president of Hughes Development Corporation. I think I know most people on this side of the room. I don't know if I know most people. I know most, but not all people on this side of the room. Our company, Hughes Development, has been the master developer of Bull Street since we first started this project in Step, well, since we first put the property under contract in 2000. Here today is Bob Hughes, chairman of our company, Chandler Cox, one of the lead project managers on the Bull Street project, and Maury Lawrence, our in-house counsel. I'm going to give a presentation. I promised city staff I would try to do this in 15 to 20 minutes, and then we will save questions or have question, time for questions at the end as we go through. But what we really want to do today is give you guys a quick run-through of how we started this project, where we came from, what all has been done so far to date, where we're going, what's happening in the near future, and then have a quick recap, very high level of all the things that have been accomplished since this project started development. So first, how'd we start? Bull Street was marketed, starting in 2007, as the largest tract of land in a city center east of the Mississippi River. It was marketed for two years in 55 countries. At the end of that process, there was not a single buyer. In 2008, December of 2008, we were contacted. Hughes Development came down and said, would you be interested in buying this piece of land? We said yes, but we have a lot of work to be done between now and doing that. So for roughly two years until 2010, we were working very closely with the state and the Department of Health to put the property under contract. This is roughly the state of the property in 2010. The Babcock Building is on your left. The picture on the right was one of the old roads on the property, but this is roughly where Left Field for Spirit Communications Park is now. You can even see the bakery building on the right side of the picture, which is home to Soco, their second location in Columbia. So 2010, we put the property under contract. We immediately went to work with the city. What does the city want to see here? What is the vision for Bull Street? How does the vision for Bull Street tie into the vision for the city of Columbia? We spent two years working very closely with city council, neighborhood associations, planning departments, the planning department, all different groups at the city to come up with the vision for Bull Street of this dense urban neighborhood, an extension of the urban core, a place with all of the new urbanist principles of safe streets, very pedestrian-friendly, great public spaces, vibrant districts with mixes of uses. We passed this zoning in 2012, the first planned unit development and form-based code ever in the city of Columbia. And even at this point in the project, we were talking about the length of time it would take for a district like Bull Street to be developed. On the second page of this document, I highlighted this little part, "In addition, even if the Bull Street neighborhood attracts increased absorption and a large share of the market in the Columbia region, the density and scale of the redevelopment will most likely take nearly 20 years." This was always intended and known to be a 20-year development project. With that in mind, we started our, the process of negotiating a development agreement with the city of Columbia. Roughly a year after we got through our zoning, the city of Columbia approved a development agreement to provide infrastructure for the project. If a piece of land was on Main Street, it already had roads, it already had sewer, it already had power, it already had sidewalks. This allowed for the Bull Street to be reconnected to Columbia. A lot of stuff in this agreement about the need for great public spaces, a lot of things tied into the zoning to create this urban district. And the agreement contemplates and acknowledges that this is a 20-year development, of which we are now in approaching the fifth year of the first five-year term of the development agreement, and so it is beginning, it is time to talk about extending the agreement. Roughly one year later, as the development agreement contemplated, a minor league baseball stadium was approved in another public-private partnership to build Spirit Communications Park. So in our minds, we were able to truly start development in 2014. We knew whether or not we had a baseball stadium, we knew exactly where it was going to go, and we were off to the races. It was interesting in just hearing Lou and Chuck's presentation, thinking about the goals and the vision of the city, hearing the goals and the visions of MBLG, and then reading the goals that Columbia has set for itself in turn at City Hall, and how all of these goals are interwoven into the agreements that were signed six, five, and four years ago, and they're being, they're being proven out through everything that we've done at Bull Street. The first goal the city had was to grow entrepreneurship and business development, something you've seen with Soco, you've seen with T-Cube, you've seen a lot of the things already happening at Bull Street. Goal number two was to, was to integrate the district in smart planning, in infrastructure planning. If you look at what has happened at Bull Street with the expansion of the sewer line, the approval of the floodways, a lot of things that have already happened, and using adaptive new code, and the city installing a new form-based code, which has never been used in Columbia before, fits all the principles of great modern urban design. Goal three, healthy quality of life. Think about creating a destination, which is Spirit Communications Park, currently a 20-acre park under construction. Bull Street is a success and will be a success because it is a great place to be and increases the quality of life for everyone in Columbia. Goal four, collaborating with different groups throughout the Midlands. The collaboration that is already happening at Bull Street is phenomenal. We have partnered with the University of South Carolina. We have partnered with local church organizations. We've had, obviously, a phenomenal partnership with the city of Columbia, all in an attempt to create, to build Bull Street as this prime destination in the region. And then, fifth, high-quality municipal services. In thinking about this, things that have already happened at Bull Street, I was just referencing, expanding the sewer system, which has happened at Bull Street, improving, not just, not just not impacting, improving flood conditions downstream from Bull Street, building this great, wonderful public park and great Spirit Communications Park, all part of this public-private partnership that has been going on under this agreement for the last four and a half years, and something that we're really proud of and have really enjoyed. And it's a good opportunity for me to thank all of city staff that we've been working with, that is every department we have touched through this project, and we have had a phenomenal experience and brag about the business-friendly approach that we continue to see in Columbia from the folks on city staff. So, development's off to the races. 2014, finally, through the entire process I was just talking through, we're planning, and we are drawing, and where does the baseball stadium go? And what are our block, what exactly should our blocks look like? And what is the right mixture of uses? And which buildings, we know we have some to save, which other ones can we save? This happened for, this is continuing to happen, and ultimately, this is where we are today. Spirit Communications Park, open and built in the dead center of the site, first base building on its side, four construction crews on site working on other projects. This is where the plan sits today and is what we are working off of. The one thing we know is that this plan is going to continue to evolve. Let's quickly go through everything that's been done so far to date. This is in 2015, as we had just broken ground on the baseball stadium. You might think this is just a picture of the baseball stadium under construction. This is actually a picture of three separate construction crews. On the left, you can see the baseball stadium. In the center, you can see the first base building, underground parking garage under construction. On the right, you can see the roadway. Three different crews, three different jobs, all having to coordinate and work together with a deadline of April 16th, 2016, to open Spirit Communications Park. Not only did that happen on time and on budget, it also happened during the worst flood Columbia's seen, at least in my, in my lifetime, during the thousand-year flood of October 2015. So a major accomplishment and a major work and example of partnership between all the groups working on that. 2015 was also the groundbreaking of the first base building. On the right was the very first tenant announced at Bull Street, Old Street Deacon's Law Firm, taking the top floor of the building, overlooking the ballpark building, some of the most beautiful office space in the city, looking right into Spirit Communications Park. Spirit Communications Park opened in 2016, immediately in its first year shattered all professional sports attendance records in the city, was awarded 2016 Ball all professional sports attendance records in the city, was awarded 2016 Ballpark of the Year, is a park that is open three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Right now, all of us on this beautiful afternoon, since it's been so cold for so long, after this meeting, we should all go take a walk around the concourse, because it's open to the public, and anyone can go do it right now. First base building also opened in 2016, three stories of office space, ground floor of retail, roof deck for the tenants. Ogle Tree Deacons took the top floor, their conference room looks right out into the ballpark, one of the coolest conference rooms that I've ever been in. 2016 also saw one of the first existing buildings to be saved, the Parker Annex. This was done by a local developer, Diversified Development Incorporated. This is now a fully leased office building, the first existing structure to be preserved on campus. This was the second. This is the bakery building, home to Soco, one of the, obviously, collaborative work groups in Columbia that has been phenomenally successful. The building is completely full by them. They are big users of the gigabit fiber that we have laid through the entire site. We'll talk a little bit more about that later, but having gigabit fiber in the site has been a major draw to business, and this is one of the key examples of that. But Bull Street is the first urban gigabit community in the state, so another first for Columbia. This is a picture of, of the inside of the building. The building was actually awarded the, one of the 2016 historic preservation awards from Historic Columbia for the work we did. 2017 saw the launch of Capgemini. T-Cube Solutions moved into the first base building. Capgemini opened, acquired T-Cube Solutions. Capgemini is a, operates in forty-two different countries, multi-billion dollar multinational firm, looking in Columbia, growing their presence in Columbia, phenomenal addition to the market. And this is just one example of the cool, some of the cool furniture. It's some of the most unique, creative, collaborative office space that I've ever seen, and I really think that it's something that stands out in Columbia and stands on its own. And the whole reason this company chose Bull Street, the sole reason was to attract and retain talent, which is what is one of our key goals at Bull Street and has always been one of our focuses. And Capgemini, you'd speak to them, they will tell you, this is why they want, this is why they are in Columbia, why they want to be at Bull Street, is for the creation of spaces like this. All right, that's all that's been done, that's what's out there today. Let's talk about what's going next. What is under construction? What's happening next? And we'll go short-term first. Bone In BBQ, first restaurant to open at Bull Street. Local chef Scott Hall, taking his food truck into a bricks and mortar, his first bricks and mortar restaurant. One of the things that's really important to us at Bull Street is authenticity, is having a true, unique Columbia experience at Bull Street. If all we did was bring in big national restaurants or folks, folks that have never been to Columbia before, you could be anywhere in the world if you're on Bull Street. We want Bull Street to be authentic, we want it to be local, we want it to be a great experience, and leading with a group like Bone In and chef Scott Hall was, was very, very important to us. His restaurant is under construction now. This is a little view on the inside, taken about a week or two ago. He's got garage doors on the right side that open up onto the plaza, Spirit Communications Park. He's going to have a private dining room. It's going to be a really unique dining experience, and we hope to have the restaurant open in mid, mid-March, just in time to get all the kinks and everything under control before baseball season starts up on April 5th? 5th. Town park at Bull Street, Bull Street's first residential offering, under construction now, twenty-eight townhomes along Calhoun Street behind the Babcock Building. This was some of the roadwork going in around the townhomes. These are the first foundations being dug. This picture was taken last week in the bitter cold. These townhomes are under construction now, for sale, will be opened, some, the first units will be delivered sometime this summer. Bull Street Park, part of our agreement with the city was to create great public parks. The first major gesture at that will be the Bull Street Park of twenty acres, Long Smith Branch. This park will have walking trails, we're daylighting a stream, we're doing a lot of things in the park that we don't think have ever been done before. This is where we are actually, we've actually found a way to improve the flooding conditions downstream by daylighting Smith Branch, by leaving the pipes in place that the Smith Branch currently flows through inside of the park. This is part of the Smith Branch, probably hasn't seen sunlight in fifteen to twenty years. Part of the work going on right now in the park that will be reforming the channel, helping the channel, helping the water to flow naturally through the site, improving water quality, improving the ecosystem, improving flooding conditions. There are just so many wins when you look at this project and what it's going to do environmentally and for quality of life in Columbia. Central Energy Facility, this is the partnership with Downtown Church. Downtown Church is under construction now, renovating the Central Energy Facility. It will be a place for worship, but also a place for events, concerts, a lot of different things they will be doing inside of the Central Energy Facility. I hope to open sometime this fall. Senior Housing at Bull Street, came in for their first permit last month, should be in for their full building permit this month, break ground sometime this spring. Hundred ninety-six active senior units right on the Bull Street Park, down the third baseline at Bull Street. One of the great things about this project is it truly fits the urban design component of what we're, what we're promoting and pushing and what is part of that vision. Densification, walkable streets, great interactivity as you're on the street. They're going to have a little sports bar in the downstairs. A lot of things that are different for senior housing traditionally. A lot of people see senior housing as behind gates, back in a, back in a big wooded community. The trend they're seeing in the market is that seniors want to be part of downtown, they want to be part of a community, they want to be part of a bigger fabric. And this way, you know, kids and grandkids don't have excuses for not coming to visit, because they went to the baseball game last night, why didn't they come see grandma? Another big thing announced is the University of South Carolina Medical School. This is going to be a phenomenal partnership for Bull Street and for the city. This is the first pass at a rendering. The university is looking at, this is the number-one capital priority of the University of South Carolina. They plan to have over a thousand jobs on this site, and this is just the first glance at six acres for the medical school. All right, so where are we going longer term? Two of the big projects that we talk a lot about, we get a lot of questions on, first being the Babcock Building. Babcock Building, built in twelve phases in the eighteen hundreds, been empty for now twenty-two years, is obviously one of the most iconic buildings in Columbia, the giant red dome at the end of Elmwood. This building has been under contract for roughly two years to a develop, to a developer whose sole focus and prior, and, and business model is to go after these historic structures and renovate them. They have been working, they have completed their plans fully, they have worked with the National Park Service and the local historic preservation organizations to get all of the approvals they need for, for the tax credits that will be required to do this renovation. They are currently working with contractors and their financial institutions to get all the final details in place to hopefully start this project in the near future. We are giving them, if the university's number-one capital priority is the med school, I would say, one of Bull Street's, probably Bull Street's number-one priority is doing everything that we can to help this developer get this project off the ground and up and running. This is one of the key projects and key focuses for us in 2018. The other key focus for us is the retail, what became known as the retail development. The retail development had a, had a lot of, lot of interest early at Bull Street, and I think, as everyone in the room knows, Hughes Development is now taking that development on ourselves. We're taking a bit of a more organic approach, but we have been working with all of the retailers and interested parties, including multiple different movie theaters. Lou, you might have to drive a little further than Lexington County, but we're working very hard to get you your movie theater. We're working very, very hard on doing this the right way, letting it grow organically, building it in phases instead of building it in one giant clump and letting it be authentic to Columbia and a great integration of uses and still meet the vision that we talked about, just in a different way, given the changes that we've seen in the marketplace and in the retail marketplace over the last several years. So, to recap everything that's happened, here's a rough picture of the entire hundred and eighty-one acre site. The tan-ish color is city-owned property, so that would be the twenty-acre public park, Spirit Communications Park in the middle, and the roadways. The blue land would be all of the other land owned by private developers or owned by Bull Street Development. For reference, the top left is a smaller picture showing roughly what this map looked like a year ago. So you've seen a lot of land, transactions take place, and a lot more activity over the last twelve months in terms of land use and land planning at Bull Street. This total acreage is now roughly ninety-eight acres of the hundred and eighty-one acres. So we've reached the tipping point, where over halfway of the land is now, is now out of the state's hands and into either private developer's hands or the city's. So forty acres of this is roughly city, fifty-two is roughly private developer, and then six, five, five-six is the university. One of the big things we've heard from everyone is, "We want more information. How do we get more? We want more, we want more." So one of the things we did is create a newsletter, and I hope everyone in the room is on our newsletter. It currently goes out to over eight thousand people around Columbia. We send it out, not on a regular schedule, but on a, every month or two months, we try to update with the newsletter. We've also been very active on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, really any way that we can. If anyone has any other ideas for ways to get the message of Bull Street out, we are all ears. And that's exhibited by the fact that these are just a small sampling of some of the groups we have spoken to over the last several months. We make it a practice not to turn down speaking invitations. We want to get the word out about Bull Street, and we want to be a conduit to city council and anyone else to share all of the good news. The two things we're also doing regularly, we have the Bull Street Commission that meets every other month, chaired by Councilman Duval, and we have regular scheduled meetings with the neighborhood, the neighborhood, Coalition of Downtown Neighborhoods. I knew I would miss that, mess that up. Coalition of Downtown Neighborhoods we meet with on a very regular basis. Quick project highlights, I mentioned a lot of these earlier. The first urban gigabit community in the state of South Carolina. Huge win in all of our, all of our effort to be sure that Bull Street is, is what we have heard the term used, of future-proof. We want Bull Street to be set up for whatever comes in the future. So getting gigabit fiber in the ground, thinking not what's Bull Street going to be like in five years, but what's Bull Street going to be like in fifty years? So putting all the things in place to be sure we can adapt to that, and gigabit fiber was one of the big pieces. The largest private office building built in Columbia since 2009, first base building open at Bull Street. Nine existing buildings to be saved. Our original agreement called for five. We are now up to nine. We made a commitment at the time, we will save as many as, as makes sense. We're now up to nine, I hope to get to ten. But two are already finished, two are under construction now, and five more are committed. We've spent over nine million dollars with disadvantaged business enterprises here, DBEs, through all the different various construction projects. Spirit Communications Park won the Ballpark of the Year, and they've had over six hundred and thirty thousand people on the Bull Street, on the Bull Street campus in the last year and a half. To think of a site that had been walled off from the community, no one allowed in, you were detained, and we were detained as developers of the site when we, they didn't know who we were, and we were working on this. You were detained if you went on this site a very short time ago. In the last year and a half, there've been over six hundred and thirty thousand people coming to Bull Street just for Spirit Communications Park. And over two hundred full-time jobs currently at Bull Street with more on the way. What are some of the development milestones? If you read through our agreements, they're very clear development milestones. One of them is with the Department of Mental Health. The Department of Health, we have an eight-year takedown schedule. We are currently two-point-eight-five million dollars ahead of our required takedown schedule with the Department of Mental Health. We have triggers for infrastructure funding from the city. We've, we have already hit the trigger of twenty-five million dollars of taxable improvements on Bull Street. Parking garage triggers, there are two triggers for parking garages. Construct a combined hundred and twenty thousand feet of office, retailer, residential space. Check. Purchase or cause to be purchased over ninety acres of the campus, also completed. And then finally, our development agreement, every year requires a review by city staff confirming that we have met all of the terms of our development agreement, and every year we have received that letter, all the first four years of this agreement. So I want to leave with this. This is the most recent branding video of the site to give you guys a sense of the vision and the energy and what's coming, what's happening, and then we can open it up for questions. Nope?
We gotta turn it up.
Doesn't work. All right.
I can hear something.
It shouldn't be moving, so. Something with the computer in the presentation, but that's not a problem?
So you had, you had clipped or something on your phone?
Yeah, it's all right. Starts and starts. Uh, there's no quick time. All right. It's on the website, it's on YouTube. Happy to spin it out to anybody that wants to see it. I am going to ask for Chandler, Maury, and Bob, Dad, I don't know what, what term I'm supposed to use, to come up, if, if there are questions, I just want to be sure that the whole team is here. This is obviously not the whole Bull Street team, but this is, these are probably the four people in our office that are spending the most time, the majority of their time on Bull Street and on this project.
Questions?
Can you go back to the slide that you put up where it had the parcels put out? I think there were twenty-eight parcels.
That one, that one you just passed.
That were, those are all under contract, or those are all already closed?
Already closed.
And that's twenty-eight parcels, if I read that right?
Thirty, just from one to thirty.
Yeah, I don't count the cities.
The city's more than two of those, so I'm happy to send you this.
I just was looking at the, what I would call the private.
It's forty-point-nine-nine acres of city-owned land, fifty-two-point-three-seven acres of privately-owned land, and five acres of university-owned land. Robert, just let me.
And those are all, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Dan.
And those are, that's all been done this past year and the last two years, is that correct?
This is roughly, I know it's hard to see, this is roughly a year ago, and then the map on the right is roughly, is all that happened in, I guess, 2017.
Robert, let's, let me just say a root of appreciation for the presentation. Particularly, the point that Daniel raises is an excellent point. The other thing that, that sort of gives me some real enthusiasm about what's going to take place and what is taking place on Bull Street. I think you know that the more the word is articulated from here midway, the better folk are going to feel about the project. So I appreciate the eight thousand newsletters that you're going to be sending out on a monthly basis or quarterly basis. That gives members of a community the opportunity to see exactly what is taking place, if there are questions that you might have of us that we can direct you, questions that are, that might legit, that, that comes from the community. So that's a, that's, that's a positive, that's something very, very positive. It looks good, we're moving forward. We've had some conversation about the movie theater.
Yes, sir.
And we looked at some point to see that done, and I know that we've got to do things incrementally. So I appreciate that. My particular point and edge is making sure that members in the community know exactly what we're doing and what the development sort of imposes within that, within that piece of progress. So I thank you for that.
And, and I thank you for your comments. I think if there's ever ideas in the room, and I try to offer this, and the whole team tries to offer this whenever we can, for ways to get more information out there, we want to hear them. But, but I do want to, just one other thing you said that I didn't make, I didn't say in the, in the presentation, is that this project, you know, if, if we, we set up a vision for this site, and we set it up with a ton of community input and a ton of council input, and with every, all the stakeholders we could possibly think of in mind, of what did Columbia, what was the vision for Bull Street at completion? And that vision is dense, it's urban, it's vibrant, it is not suburban shopping mall, it's not track homes, it's not things that, you know, I don't want to say any development is easy, but it's not things that generally can happen, that generally happen very quickly and can, and can pop up overnight. It is things that take a lot of time, and I think one of the things that, that I get a lot of feedback on from others in the community is that we're trying, we're trying to, we are not going to sacrifice speed for quality. We're not going to sacrifice speed or, or quality in getting this right or anything. So we are committed to this for the long haul. We have been invested in this. I mean, I showed you the timeline. We've been on the property, it'll be ten years in December since we started working on this. This project is a very long-term project for our company and something we're committed to long-term, and we appreciate the city being our partner in that and going through that with us, because to get it right, to fulfill that vision, it's going to take all the time that we've contemplated.
You might want to, I think you've touched on it. In the beginning, there was, I think there was, there was an understanding or some, some, some hopes that some of the big boxes would come. And it's, it's obvious nationwide that that's not happening, but can you talk about how you, as the developers, have sort of positioned yourself to, to deal with that? I think it's important that the community knows that, that you're still on track or that because the big boxes aren't really going to come, you're not going to reach your goal.
Take that one? Softball for Dan.
And one of the things I'm thinking about, you know, you're talking about the big boxes, that's funny. And when we came, the vision of Columbia, they said, "Don't come looking at this site if you don't do the Duane play." So, yeah, some of you will remember, we brought Andres. So some of you will remember, we brought Andres Duane to Columbia and two other planning firms and had a week-long charrette with everybody from Columbia. And to show you how fast things have changed, the original Duane plan had no big boxes, had nothing but small boxes. You even couldn't do a very big piece of retail. And so much had changed by the time he came back, that there's a whole special zone, there was to be nothing but big boxes in our plan. Because the big boxes, that was kind of all that was going on. And since he did that plan, so much has changed. We've taken that zone back and we're going back with, there's, there are some big boxes on this plan, but less than we had before because the retail climate has so changed. And, but some of the boxes, groceries still want to be in a bigger box. Movie theaters still like to be in a bigger box. Certain kind of retailers, there's not 150,000-foot boxes, not a real big box, but 50,000-foot boxes are the kind of big we're using now. And we've probably got arrangements for maybe as many as three of those on the site with shops mixed between. So it's gone from no boxes to all boxes to a few of the smaller of the bigger boxes. And we are working with all of them. I mean, Robert's got, Robert has been all over the country in the last couple of months. He's talking today. We're seeing those people. There are, the original plan, or the previous developer, wanted to open 400,000 square feet on the same day. That's extraordinarily difficult because retailer A isn't going to go unless retailer B, C, D, and E are going to open too. By the time you get all that set up, E has gone broke or decided he's going to do something else next year. So, and if you did it, it would be one set of architecture, it would be one time that all the leases expired, it would be one time that things all wore out together, it'd be one snapshot in time. But doing it this way, the way our, I mean, instead of one 400,000 footer, we want to do five 80,000 footers. We've got things that are of their time, retailers of the right time, restaurants of the right time, and it will have its own life. And of the 400,000 feet of retailers, 100 and something thousand feet of them have said, "We'd go regardless of anybody else." So those are the people we're talking to. So it's a, sorry for the very long answer, but I just, since Robert covered the whole history, I thought I would too. But it's, it's been well responded to in a different climate than where we started.
So, excuse, to say then, that if there are big boxes that's not being filled or occupied immediately, that does not negate the fact that they aren't going to be filled. They are going to be filled in a very creative.
And if they aren't ready in time, more small ones will take them.
Alright, I got you.
We want to do what's right at that time. And there's, there's good demand sort of on both sides. There's a lot of posturing. I mean, now the retailers say things like, "I'm the only retailer you can get, you got to cut your rent down so you lose money on me, you can make it up on the next one." The problem is, they all say that. So there's no next one. So you just have to maneuver through it.
And the feedback has truly been, as we've been all around, has been phenomenal. I mean, Columbia is on these companies' radars. It's really exciting and refreshing to hear how much interest in this market exists and how a piece of property like this and this type of opportunity is the only type of opportunity those retailers and even some businesses would be looking at in Columbia. So these are companies that are not in the market, that don't have presences here, that are only looking at Columbia to look at Bull Street. And that's a really special thing. Now, there's a lot of work between that early conversation where everybody's patting each other on the back and talking great about how great the site is and how great the city is, and getting something ink on paper and getting something built. And that's the process that we're in now. But the feedback has continued to be, "When you're ready, I'm there," you know, "or, or I want to be there, I want to be there, how do I get there?" And so the feedback is all great, it's just a matter of executing in a climate where banks don't love retail, retailers are skittish. And there's a lot of things that make it, that add new challenges, but the interest level's there. And so we, we think we have a flexible approach that will allow us to close some of those things.
The magic thing you said is the affirmation of the plan that we all got together and came up with in the beginning was this is unique and it can be special and it can be like nothing else. And we have companies with hundreds of employees who say, "We want to do it anywhere else." We have retail, that Robert just mentioned. If we come to Columbia, we're coming there or we're not coming at all. So we're getting that affirmation. Getting, getting the footage done is more work. But we also thought, when this retail development stopped on the front of big, well-known retail developers, we thought, "We're going to be going around talking to retailers." I've had enough of this. We're really not running into that. We've got the site, we've got the place, we want to work. So we've just got to fit in the slots to get it done.
Daniel.
Yeah, I just, a quick question. One thing, what hurdles do y'all see in place now? Things that are prohibiting the back half of that growth and the other things? Is there anything there that's potentially holding y'all back from getting it developed?
Great question.
No, I mean, we've got the market, just the whole market. We've talked about the recovery, you know, the stock market is ripped up, but the middle class, the middle market, nobody's felt that big super recovery. So everyone's just cautious. So the retailers will say, "I've got nine slots for 2021." And you've got to stand there and say, "We want you, we're willing to wait for a year to see if one of those drops out." So it's, it's just a matter, it's like a jigsaw puzzle. You know, I guess if you had a giant jigsaw puzzle spread out on that table, that's one of the obstacles to getting it done. Just the work and time it takes to get it done.
Anybody else?
I'll just close with, I've told you guys this, but I'll say it in front of my colleagues, you know, as kind of follow-up to Daniel's question. You know, if there are folks that you were talking to and you're getting there, certainly if the city can be helpful in bringing, you know, the city leadership to the table and saying, "Yes, we want you, we want you part of the Columbia community," I think that that is where, you know, I don't feel like we've been utilized where we could be. And if we can help close a deal or at least sweeten the deal so that people know that they're, they're coming into a welcoming community and a city who wants them here, you know, we want to be, you know, brought to the table.
It's actually, you're talking about a level different from where we've been, and I think we should do that. But we'd be, we'd miss if we didn't tell you Ryan Cole, Secretary of Economic Development Department, had been in a number of these meetings with us. Y'all have got your hands on an ore and you were pulling just as hard as everybody else. And it's been really appreciated. And it's, it's felt, and Robert said that earlier. It is recognized by people out of Columbia that we are all working together. And I think it's a welcome feeling for those people to see what we're doing. Because we've got a couple of really big guys sniffing the bait, playing with the bait. And the fact that y'all are in the room and they can call y'all directly and ask for things, it's been a big help.
And certainly that doesn't mean to say, I know Brian and Gregory are fabulous. Thank you guys.
Yes.
For all your work.
We cannot. The partnership that I think you've seen, or that we have felt, that I look around the room, the amount of people that are working on this at city hall and in different city offices is phenomenal. And the work that everybody's done is, it has truly felt like a partnership and been very fun working with the city of Columbia. And so we thank you, all of staff and all of council for all you're doing.
Thank you for the briefing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we will have a fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget workshop calendar as we're getting prepared to have you all give us some direction on budget. As we clear the room and quiet that down, we'll get Ms. Missy Kaufman, Budget and Program Management Director, to come forward.
Are you working any restaurants? She's not in the restaurant.
You may want a hard copy of the materials.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Daniel, thank you. Here, Rob. Good job.
I do not see Chris Trainor, but he is tweeting, so he might be watching us live.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
While we're waiting on Missy, Ms. Wilson, can you introduce our new addition to everybody?
Is Melissa here?
Yep.
Hey, this chair, I haven't seen you the whole meeting. Hello, Melissa. Good. Come to the podium. I would love to, and I plan to do it again this evening.
Okay.
Melissa is wearing many hats this week as she's starting with us.
Hold on, hold on one second, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Missy, you got another hard copy for Mr. McDowell?
Here's one.
What's his name's bedroom?
Okay, I think Mr. Davis stepped down. He knows. No, we're about to.
Mr. Recomend.
Anyway, if you give me a call at your convenience.
I had to take care of my constituent issues.
And that's a very important constituent, I know.
And actually, you are my constituent.
Very important one.
But Daniel, let's talk.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not happening.
Okay, and Mr. Davis is back. Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, so Ms. Melissa Lindler is our newest addition to the city family and the city team as our Office of Business Opportunities Director. And we welcome her this week as she starts the journey with us. I was about to say that she's wearing many hats already because she's also on jury duty originally counting, right?
Actually, I got it transferred.
Okay, good. That's why I wasn't expecting you until this evening possibly, so great, even better. But welcome, Melissa.
Thank you so much.
First council meeting, right?
First meeting day. I think I know most of everyone in the room. I'm going to take my way around, so if I have not met you or we've not sat down to meet yet, I do look forward to that opportunity to meet everyone, all the department heads, all of your assistant city managers. This is a great team and I'm so happy to be here. As most of you know, I actually worked prior to coming here in Congressman Clyburn's office. So I know a lot of the city employees and I've had a lot of interaction prior to it. I'm in the same building, so my move was very, very easy. It was one box and I just put everything in there and I went downstairs. I look forward to working with everyone. This is a great, great team that you have, Teresa, and I am so happy with the OBO team. They're very, very devoted, I guess that's the best word for it. But they do have the best interest of the citizens in mind and the small minority of women-owned businesses. And I look forward to working with each of you to make sure that we're implementing and we're on task and we meet the needs of your citizens in their respective areas as well.
Melissa, thank you. And Missy Gentry really led the charge to hire our newest OBO director. I have to thank Missy. I think we ended with a wonderful candidate and we're so happy you're here. Did she want to add? Okay, great.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Missy Kaufman?
And I've been promised she is going to go by Melissa.
I know, now we got three, we would have three misses.
We should be, we should be safe. You know, it takes two misses to run the city.
Two Teresas.
Three is getting a little much, right? Welcome. Good afternoon, everybody. We are here today to kick off the FY 18-19 budget season with everyone. To get us started, we want to talk about what the schedule we're sort of laying out in terms of topics of conversations and when we'd be bringing materials to you and how we are looking to go forward through the budget process. Wanted to start a little bit with you to talk about sort of some of the things that we have started off with our departments in terms of those items or those points that we use in terms of what makes up and decision-making inputs for the budget process. Obviously, we start out with Envision Columbia, city council priorities, and then department work plans, which all tie together. Priority-based budgeting is a process that we are going through this year by way of where departments will, we will be basically inventorying our services and our programs and our activities, prioritizing those according to our Envision Columbia strategic plan. And the goal is that by April, possibly May, we'll be able to demonstrate to you the budget in a priority-based budgeting model. But basically, it's a comprehensive view, the entire program. It's a really in-depth review. This is our first year really delving in it, so we have a lot of work to do. It was something that will get better as we go along. But it is basically a way of, as I said, inventorying what we do and prioritizing those different programs and services that we do. We like to talk about the city is, we're a half a billion dollar organization with 100 books of business and a lot of different services we provide. So it's a way to sort of getting a big picture of everything that we do. Also, of course, part of that is that departments do have their requests that they need to fulfill in order to meet those services and provide the services that are expected, as well as our capital request. And then, of course, we have mandated and require cost. You'll see over at the small, at the bottom, over here on the right, that's available resources. You can see it is greatly overshadowed by the needs for the budget, to make up the budget compared to our available resources. But at the end of the day, we will bring you a proposed budget and by the time the process is done, we will have a balanced budget. Starting out, of course, today, we're going over the calendar and topics. Of course, everything's subject to change and we will adapt as needed for any other topics or items that need to be addressed. Starting next week, we'll start off the budget process with our healthcare discussions. Next week's really more of a review of what our planning administrator, Blue Cross Blue Shield, has brought to us in regards to administering the plan in terms of communicating and engaging our workforce and our covered, the folks that are covered on our plan, as well as what they're doing to help us manage our plan. Of course, that will also kick off a number of other discussions, but primarily that is centered around the administration of our 2018 plan.
February 20th, I think, is when we would like to sit down and talk about options.
Sure. So we are, and you can see, starting going into the February 6th and 12th, we will still be, February, the two meetings in February, we will still continue to be talking about healthcare as we figure we will be talking about healthcare for quite a while.
Our goal as council is by March 20th to have made a decision because then we can stay solely focused on the budget.
February 20th or March 20th?
February 20th, we'd like to have discussion with options, alternative options. And then by March 20th, we want to be able to.
Give us direction.
Yes. So that we are not talking about it during budget season like we did last year. And that that would go into effect in the new budget year, July 1, with the start date of.
July 1, January 2019.
19, God, I can't believe we're talking about 19.
Yes, exactly. But part of that too is also it is time for an actuarial study for this year, so we will be bringing you the actuarial.
Which will play into everything we do, so.
Timing is right.
That's right. So we talk about plan design, then we talk about eligibility discussions, and then we talk about overall goals. So also what we plan to do in February is be able to bring to you a review, an update of the Envision Columbia work plan. We'll also kick off with the water sewer rate study overview. That will be the initial review, talking about how the plan is done, picking up where we left off last year and getting us ready to move in forward to the 18-19 rate study discussion. Also, by February, we anticipate being able to bring to you the closeout of the FY 16-17 fiscal year. In March, we will start really bringing more budget discussions with you, talking, starting with the parking fund, special revenues, which really includes primarily hospitality fund. And then revenue forecasts will be focused primarily, it's primarily on general fund. But a lot of that will be picking up on the different things that we talked about with you all last budget year with regards to options for different revenue streams, sources of revenues, looking at our existing revenue sources and going on that path. So a lot of it will be based on those discussions that we've brought from you in the past and making sure we're still on the right path with regards to the intentions that you all have with regards to our revenue sources. Moving on into April, we are looking then to be able to talk with you based on conversations about parking, I mean, about the revenues, looking at the general fund proposed. I mean, about the revenues, looking at the general fund proposed budget and overview of operational and capital needs. Of course, that would be a very preliminary look at the budget at that point, but then, um, we can start to see where we are and where things are following together. By 17th, we'll be looking at our water and sewer proposed budget, and by then we should have results of the rate study and, and a, uh, look back at the stormwater program, um, and where we are going forward with that program. By May, we've left this really as our remaining budget discussions. Of course, there's a number of topics that I'll bring to you on this next slide. Um, we'll be filling in a number of different things here as well. Um, May 15th, at this point, if we stick with City Council's regular meeting schedule, May 15th would be your last regular scheduled meeting before we have to advertise the budget for public hearing.
Special call, maybe?
I think that would take a, an option of City Council, but of course, we'd be willing to do as we need to. But hopefully, everything will be nice and wrapped up by that date. We're gonna stay on target, right?
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing to spend, so it'll be real easy.
It'll be real easy. By June 5th, we'll have the public hearing and the first reading, and June 19th is the second reading and passage of the budget final adoption. So that's with regards to some of the known items. We have some additional topics that we all, um, have heard you all mention that, um, you've asked to be discussed, um, some other topics as well that will be peppered in throughout the budget discussions as we go through the next several months with you all. Some of those topics, and of course, this is not an exclusive list, um, governance process for council-driven projects, affordable housing, economic development priorities, attracting and retaining our employees, homeless services, county fire, 911 services. Of course, again, that's not our only topics, but those are ones that we know specifically have been requested or are addressed or have been brought up over the last, um, year as we were wrapping up last year's budget discussions and moving forward.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
For us to have, obviously, a productive budget meetings and everything, we really need to know where the county is on their multiple moving parts, uh, including 911, fire, and everything else. Do you think it's possible that we could bring the big tent to town and kind of get the circus in, in line so that we can get a feeling of where they are and what numbers and budgeting? Because it's gonna be very hard for us to, to budget and move forward not knowing that.
Yes, sir. I, you know, yes, I'll do my best.
I'll get you a top of that.
We've made the request on the 911, and Chief Holbrook has been helping to navigate the, you know, some of the just questions and requests for clarity on that as far as fire is concerned. We've submitted the agreement back over and you know that our good chief and his team are still providing services, so.
Now, if we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna make moves and, and do that understanding, you know, the short-term costs and the long-term costs, I think we want to be very clear about how the, those numbers are, that we're not willing to just have a blank check.
Well, I think Chief, you're clear on the 911 requests, where I've, kind of where I stand on that. And then we'll continue to work through with, with fire. You know, that's us providing a service if it's still wanted, so.
I just think it's very important that we kind of, we kind of know. I mean, we had, I reminded myself, you know, at the end of this year, we had this, this document that we received, and there was supposed to be a follow-up, and there's been nothing. And the question is, is can we get these things resolved, uh, or, you know, do we just move on and?
Well, we do have schedule for, um, next week, some of the utilities-related matters to be discussed during the work session. I guess a perspective that you all asked for on that from the business community. And then I think we feel like the conversation, I mean, we've, we've kind of put out there where we are on all of those other various topics, so.
We just need to get some closure in time.
That's correct.
They're not responding, or, or at least in the time you manage. So we know what the hell it is.
I, I got it.
Um, unless there's anything else to sort of comment on, this is.
I like the schedule.
Good. And we tried to incorporate like the governance process, Mr. Rickaman. I know you had requests at that. We'll be bringing you all a presentation during a work session upcoming. Probably the first meeting in February, affordable housing. We'll have Ryan, um, do as he normally does, um, but putting to, together some benchmarks associated with the various, um, proposed partners, making sure they're in line with our priorities.
And I think it'd be great to add to that, you know, the discussion today that was brought forth, uh, you know, reminds me of how many arms are moving.
Absolutely.
And, and it, you know, reminds me as we had those discussions on homelessness and, you know, with multiple parties and everybody, oh, I'm in, I'm in as a partner until you start talking about collaborating with money. Uh, so, you know, I think we need to look and, you know, this may be time that we may want to revisit what our economic development folks, focus should be or are.
Yeah.
You know, and where we're putting our resources to build our city vertical and fill all those empty retail spaces and how we do it so that we can, the, the state tax structure is hurting our small businesses really now. And the last tax bill that came out, I've talked to several business owners, and if you look at where the assessments have gone and everything, the time they pay their CAM taxes and insurance, these people are paying close to thirty-seven dollars a square foot. It's not sustainable in our, in, in our world, and we need those services and those businesses to continue to attract people here.
And that's why there's certain areas where you can't attract businesses also.
Well, it hurts everywhere else.
Costs are just getting off the ground.
Nobody's gonna take a.
Well, it's, it's got a, it's, it's certainly a holistic discussion we want to talk about and one of Missy's, um, topic, topics, I don't remember which month, but was also about, you know, revenue generation. And just if you all are still inclined for us to have the discussion, we always like to bring to the table the discussion of, um, the tax exempt entities as well.
The four thousand parcels are very much on our radar, and I think they need to be in that other category, for sure.
So I wanted to make sure you all are still, uh, okay with us having that discussion, so. That, I think incorporates most everything.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thanks, Missy. At this time, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, we can entertain a motion to go into executive session and any additional.
We should add, and I think we should add the Bull Street Agreement discussion since it was brought up today in the presentation, again, asking for renewal.
All right.
And I'd like to add, under employment of employee, um, municipal judges.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it appropriate for me to, uh, add to the agenda for executive, uh, session, uh, uh, hospitality tax for, uh, particular.
Funding, probably not.
It wouldn't be executive session.
But I can forget it.
I want you to have some.
But we'll talk about that.
All right.
All right, so is there a motion? Somebody, remember, you've got to read, you've got to read.
What is it?
Everything down here.
Plus, did you, just, just these? No add, no addition.
Yeah, there was.
Oh, seven.
I'll do it, and then you can say, okay. Is there a motion for executive session for discussion of negotiations in incident to propose contractual arrangements pursuant to SE Code 3470A2, Central Carolina Community Foundation, Lockhart, receipt of illegal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege, Bradford Collins versus City of Columbia, State of Brown versus City of Columbia, Officer Mike Bailey, and Carolina Water, discussions of matters related to proposed location expansion or provision of services, Main Street Culinary Training Program, and the discussion of employment of employees, municipal judges, city council office, and then contractual, I guess that would have been contractual, and then another contractual arrangement, the Bull Street Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and promptly second. Erica, if you could read the role.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying here.
Yeah, and I-